Okay. All right, so the meetings and calls were six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, and I see a lot of initials on the banner, so I'm guessing we've got some townspeople, so welcome. Thank you to my colleagues and Marlene for being here today. Our second virtual slash remote meeting, so thanks, everybody. It's kind of the world we're living in now. So we'll move right into the agenda, and I would ask my colleagues and Marlene if there's any announcements that they would like to make or need to make.
I would just like to say a thank you to John and Patty Hens because they came up with the idea of townspeople putting candles or lights out Sunday night, just sort of as a show some hope and some solidarity and being in this crisis all together. And I drove around town, and it was really nice. It was really nice, so kudos to them for doing that.
Yes, thank you. That was a nice, a nice event. Luminarium in April. It's nice. Was there anything else, Diana, that you had from an announcement perspective?
I do not, thank you.
You're welcome. Ed, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, how about you, Marlene?
No, I don't.
Okay. And I don't either. I know the only thing I wanted to touch on is coming up as our next topic of discussion anyway, so just wanted to put that out there. I do want to read just for the public's knowledge that all the participation at the town meeting for the Hatfield Select Board, we welcome everyone to its meetings and all of our public meetings for the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town shall be open to the public and shall conform to open meeting law, which is why we're doing what we're doing tonight, given the circumstances with COVID-19. Executive sessions are closed for the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate during meetings of the select board. An attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. I just wanted to read that, which is what we've been reading at all our meetings that, well, when we used to have them in person, actually. So I didn't see any minutes to be approved, or did I?
I haven't.
That's okay. I know we kind of use a template for our, okay. All right, so we will move right into our posted business, which is the first topic is the COVID-19 information update. Marlene, I didn't know if you had anything, but I would just say that hopefully everybody, the townspeople, have signed up to receive the automated messages through the town, and in particular, this time of year or this circumstance, we, the Select Board and the Board of Health, Carrie Flaherty and Bob Flaherty, Emergency Management Director, have been sending out Monday updates as to where we as a community stand with the coronavirus, where we stand as far as the people that have been tested positive, updating the public with any sort of information we have from MEMA or the Governor's Office, and we're trying to do our best to keep everybody abreast of what we find out as we find it. So hopefully, the people listening tonight and the people that are going to be watching us in the future are receiving those calls, and if you're not and you haven't signed up, you can go to the fire department and register the number or numbers that you want to receive that message. Not only given the current circumstances, as I mentioned, but anything that's happening in the future or any sort of an emergency call that we need to send out, it's certainly good to be, to have your number registered with the emergency management team. So just wanted to throw that out there. Before we go on any further, I did, because it wasn't on my sheet or I didn't see it, is there anybody on this call tonight for public forums? And we do need people to mute their phones if they're not speaking.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was going to mention, ask people to, as a reminder, to mute their microphone.
So is there, is there anybody that would like to speak tonight on the public forum portion of tonight's Board of Selecting meeting? Okay. Hearing none. Okay, so I don't know who we, there is a way of muting people.
There is, and most people that are not participating in this meeting, they are not on the agenda. I can see they are.
That sounds like Bob's voice.
And the Cemetery Commission, Bob Flaherty and Jonathan Bardwell are on, and they, they will, you know, during this meeting, the board will be discussing filling a vacancy.
Okay, well, they're up, they're up on, they're on deck right now, so, right?
Oh, well, I thought, can I just, I'm sorry, Brian, can I interrupt? I thought we had a little bit more on the COVID update. I mean, I guess I just want to mention, of course, the directive that came from Governor Baker's office today, canceling school for the rest of the year, which is, you know, in my opinion, really significant and probably completely appropriate. But I just want to acknowledge, you know, the school department and the teachers who, you know, that means another month of this, this new way of teaching and staying in touch with their students, and so I just want to acknowledge them for what they're doing because it's incredible.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, thanks, Diana, because a lot of people at this point might not have even realized that because I think the official announcement was today, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it was just, I think, at noon time.
Yeah, it was at noon time, so all Massachusetts schools have been postponed or canceled, I guess is the right word, till fall. So I'm sure there'll be much more to follow from a, from a state perspective, but to follow up on Diana's point, we, we do appreciate, especially the people with children in the schools, do appreciate what the teachers are doing, and the parents, for that matter. So I think we probably all had a feeling that this was probably gonna happen, and it's kind of a bummer in many respects, but it's totally understandable from a safety perspective that it's probably, or it is the right thing to do. I mean, you know, it's just, we're in uncharted waters, so everyone's doing their best and erring on the side of caution and certainly keeping, keeping people away from one another, which is still the directive by the governor and the town and the Board of Health of the Hatfield. This is still maintain, you know, cover your face with masks when you're out in public and to maintain social distancing, so. So thank you for that, Diana. Marlene, did you have anything to add to the COVID-19?
Yeah, I had thought perhaps you would, would cover the information that we had received today from, from the governor and the lieutenant governor. And I know that Senator Commerford will be hosting a conference call tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, so I probably will. I have not joined hers yet. I've joined others, but not her, her conference call. I think, Diane, you have, and I know Ed has.
Yes, and it was, it was really great, very informative. She's responsive, as always, you know, very concerned and had some good information and answers for questions and whatnot, and actually reached out to me about something today because I had raised the issue if they would extend deadlines and things that we were under for our Mass Works grant. And so they reached out today to say if we had heard anything, and I said, we really hadn't reached out to DHCD yet because it wasn't, I guess we didn't really need to worry about it just yet, but that may at some point be something we have to look at and think about, just depending on, you know, because there's another funding piece to this and how elections are held and all of that. So, but, you know, Ed can speak to the meeting as well, but it was, I thought it was terrific.
Marlene, can I just butt in one second while we're talking COVID, so that I can go back to work?
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. I was gonna, I was trying to see if there was a way I could hit you up on a instant message, but I couldn't figure, I couldn't figure it out. Yeah, go ahead, please.
No worries. Just so that everybody can be updated, I did put together a letter today.
Your camera's really close to your face, by the way.
Because I'm standing, I'm holding my phone. Um, I updated a letter that was sent out. Key put it on the social media page today, and Lydia put it on the town website, for those that are on here today. The town offices at this point still need to stay closed and will remain closed no sooner than opening than May 18th, and we'll discuss that again, obviously, as a whole. So that May 4th deadline's been pushed off to at least May 18th at this point. And obviously, we've discussed the schools are closed, the parks and playgrounds are going to continue to stay closed, and that's going to be probably beyond May 18th. And just for the general public, we have not ruled out summer rec for the kids. It's just, I can't make a decision right now, out more guidance from the governor and how much further numbers are going to be and stuff. We really have to have a straight, good two weeks decline in numbers, and the governor gives us those updates, obviously, every day, but we have to have that before I can make, I and the rest of the board can make a decision on if we're going to allow summer rec or not. I have been talking with Danielle from the rec department, and she reached out and asked, and I said that as soon as I have the answer, I will get it to her so that we can get information out to parents and hopefully get kids signed up, especially now that these poor kids are missing the rest of the school year. Having summer rec for at least the K through sixth or whatever would be good for them to be able to have a source to do something over the summertime if we can allow it.
And Carrie, Governor Polito alluded to that, to that. But I just also, I believe, you know, it's also a decision at the, at the local level. But I wanted to just add, I just lost the thought. Oh, I know what I was going to say. If anybody hasn't had a chance yet, and in today's, it would then yesterday's MEMA report, there is a link to access the DPH dashboard. It, that is, that is wonderful. I had.
And it's where all the details are. Everybody, if you go to the Mass Gov page, there's a whole thing on COVID, and you could get into everything. You can get all the details that you'd ever want are on there, and there's stuff to link you into the CDC also, so anybody that's looking for information definitely can get it from there. Two quick things, and then I promise I won't talk anymore about COVID. One, I know the Council on Aging was reaching out to try to get people who are making masks and they're working with the police department and hopefully getting those out to people in the public. Just so the public knows, we are not giving out N95 masks. There's been some inquiries to that. N95 masks are specifically for first responders and emergency personnel at hospitals, and they're at a very low availability right now, so we will not be giving those out to the townspeople. If anybody has them, those really should be getting donated to hospitals or to fire departments and EMS and stuff like that. Those really are not for everyday, general, public use. So that's one thing for people that might be watching tonight. And the other thing is that, again, if you have questions or concerns or anything, please feel free to reach out to us, even though the offices are closed. You can call the town hall and do extension 105 for the Board of Health, and Key has been very good about getting messages to us and stuff like that, so I can, I answer them as fast as I possibly can. But just realize that it takes some time. I'm trying to homeschool and work and take care of the Board of Health responsibilities all at once. So if I don't answer back to people right away, or one of the other board members doesn't, just don't take it personally. We will get an answer back to you.
Great.
But that's all I have to say for tonight.
That's okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
We appreciate the update, thank you.
Yep. Thanks for everything you're doing, Carrie.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Diana, Ed, Marlene, does anybody have anything else regarding the COVID-19?
Can I say something, Brian?
Yep.
Lydia.
Oh, hey, Lydia.
Hey. The only other thing I wanted to add is that if people are signed up for e-alerts on the town website, that every time I post something about COVID-19, I check the email, e-alerts, and it automatically goes to anyone's email that has signed up. So you would automatically get those notices that, Marlene, that you sent to me. Post, they would automatically get them if they're signed up for e-alerts.
Huh, that's funny. I thought I was signed up for e-alerts, but I don't get them through that mode.
Well, when you sign up for e-alerts, there's a whole list of things you can pick.
Right.
You want to, you want to get noticed on. It could be selectmen's news, it could, you could have just signed up for news, there's urgent alerts. So it depends on what you sign up for, what you will get. So you're not getting everything, you're only getting what you're interested in.
Right, so townspeople should maybe take a look at, if they're already signed up, what they're signed up for too.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, while we're on the topic, then I would say that townspeople who are going to see this tonight and in the future should also understand that if they have not gotten an email or a phone call, then they aren't signed, they aren't, they either aren't signed up or it's not working properly, that, that they're to be notified through that Code Red system. So if you think that you should have been getting these things, definitely, you know, follow up with, is it you, Lydia, or is it actually with Bob?
Well, I do the e-alerts for the town website. I think calling is through the fire department, Carrie.
Yeah. But it's just a coordinated effort as far as what people, you know, people should just, when they're watching this and say, I haven't heard anything in three weeks, you should know that the last three Mondays, a notification went out to the townspeople. So if you haven't gotten anything, then you're not signed up, or something's wrong, and you should follow up on it.
And if you.
Go ahead, Karen. You're frozen.
If for some reason somebody can't get on a computer to do that, yes, they can call the fire department and the fire needs to get that your name.
All right, so I think I'm going to decipher what Carrie just said, which was, if you, if you call the fire department and get, and get the voicemail, just leave your name, why you're calling, and the phone number, where, I guess, the phone number where you'd want to be reached for a Code Red. And then you would do just the, you would do a similar thing, I would imagine, Lydia, if it's okay. If you want to be on the e-alerts, the email alerts, then you would contact the town clerk's office. I don't know if you have to fill out a form or if you take it over the phone.
No, they could, they do it right, they do it right online. They go on the web.
They can do it online, okay.
There's a little button that says, sign up for e-alerts and, or notifications. They click on it, and it walks them right through it.
Even better. Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right. Moving on, we do have some appointments to the Cemetery Commission and the Local Cultural Council. That's on our agenda.
Brian, so because the vacancy on the Cemetery Commission is an elected position, this will require the Board of Selectmen and Cemetery Commission to vote.
Joint meeting, mm-hmm, okay. So I guess I would ask the Cemetery Commission, maybe, to make a comment or step forward.
So we received two notifications about two interested parties looking to join the Cemetery Commission to fill the vacancy from Joel Valley needing to resign about 45, 50 days ago at this point. We had one from Lucinda Williams was the first one that came through, and then another one that came through was John Pease. We, we reached out to both of them, between Jonathan Bardwell and myself separately, and Joel Valley had also talked to Lucinda right around the time that his resignation was official, and she expressed that, being that she's across from the Bradstreet Cemetery, and she's very well-versed in the history, she's very interested. We did have a Cemetery Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, out in the front steps of the town hall, and the general consensus was that we were going to recommend Lucinda Williams be appointed to the Cemetery Commission to fill Joel Valley's spot.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, was somebody else speaking?
Does that have to be a motion from the Summer Jerry Commissioners to us?
I would think it would be.
I think it's a recommendation.
Right, our recommendation, and I believe it has to be a motion from the board as the appointing authority.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to accept Lucinda Williams as Cemetery Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to appoint Lucinda, and that's to replace Joe in his, for an additional, it's, it's an elected position, there's one year remaining on that particular elected position. Am I correct in stating that? So I just wanted to, okay, so is there any further discussion?
I know Jonathan's on here, I don't know if he had anything to add.
It has to be a roll call vote.
Right.
Right. Thank you, Lydia. Is anybody else?
Is, Jonathan is on, I see that he's present.
Okay.
He may not have, may not have a camera or audio.
Okay, so, well.
If he could turn his microphone on, if that's possible.
Yeah, I don't.
No problem. So the motion's made, and it's a roll call vote, so to appoint Lucinda. So please state yea or nay in your name. So Moriarty, I?
Zinal, I.
Chorworski, I.
Flaherty, I.
Okay. Jonathan, okay. Lydia, you good?
Yep.
Okay. So welcome, Lucinda and Joe, thank you for all your years of service on the Cemetery Commission. We appreciate it. All right, we also.
Would like to add real quick.
Yes.
Joel Valley has agreed to still help us out and really continue doing a lot of the things that he was doing. He loves what he does, but he, so he's still going to stay and help us out with a lot of the different things. He just, legally, he can't stay on Cemetery Commission, being the town moderator, so that was part of why he had to step away, but he's still going to help us, and he's still going to do a lot of the work because he really loves what he's doing, and Jonathan, I really appreciate what he's doing for us already. So thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Hey, can I just add for a second? You know, we're still going ahead with it, but Kai Ino has all of the mapping information, and she's working on it from remote right now. And in the next few weeks, we should see all of Brad Street and all of Main Street maps online for people to access as well. That's taken like 15 years to get there, and we're, she has everything now to start posting that, so people can look up a lot of data and information, as well as funeral homes, too.
That's terrific. Again, thank you, Joe, and all the commissioners for that, and Key as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Next, under appointments, we also had appointments to the Cultural Council.
Yes. Brian, did you see I did send a second appointment today to the board?
Yes, I did see that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So is there somebody, is there anybody that wanted to speak to that besides the Board of Selectmen as far as the Cultural Council goes?
We weren't expecting the Cultural Council to join, to join us, but each of these appointments are for a three-year term.
Okay. So what we're, so the direct, the recommendation from the Cultural Council to the Board of Selectmen is Deborah Nimitz, I hope I said that right, and Kathy Zimer, to be appointed, each of them to be appointed for a three-year term on the Cultural Council.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Deborah Nimitz and, what's the other name, Zimer?
Z.
Kathy, yeah.
Kathy Zimer to the Local Cultural Council.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, just like to thank both ladies for, for being part of the Cultural Council Committee, so thank you in advance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so I know we have our meeting in about five minutes with the Finance Committee, and, and we can either wait till later, or if you want to give us a little update on the town hall building renovations, or if that's coming from Marlene, under Continued Old Business. Talk to you guys. If you need more than five minutes, we can do it after our meeting or later on. Any highlights? I mean, just, the elevator's looking good, the driveway, the ramps looking good, the lighting, the lanterns, the lamps are looking good, the wrought iron fencing, I mean, it really looks nice when you go by town hall, just to see the renovations and where they stand right now. So where are we with the elevator, by the way? Are we pending certification and a phone and all that, or is that?
So we're waiting on the fire, a fire pump installation. And once that's done, then there'll be an inspection of that, and we're just waiting on the inspection of the elevator. Understanding is the state's schedule is, is quite full. I mean, they, this, this was scheduled some time ago, right, Ed? And just waiting on, it was, you know, not pushed out intentionally, it just, their, their schedule is very busy.
And this is for the final inspection to get signed off on, so that it's?
For the elevator.
For the elevator, right? Yeah. Okay.
So the West End Egress is in progress, and so there, there's still some items to be taken care of, and they are working on the punch list as well.
Right, okay. And it almost seems like the end's in sight. Maybe. Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Thank you both for, you know, your ongoing work on that. I, it's, I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I, Diana's sentiments, we appreciate it, and it's nice to have both of you there. Ed, with your background at UMass, and Marlene, the, your skills, you bring us a town administrator, so, so thank you for, for being the go-betweens, the conduits for us. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we can, I'll start, I can kill a minute talking. So we're meeting with the Finance Committee in Malton Heath in one minute. So I guess I'll just ask the Finance Committee if, in fact, they are present. I saw Pat earlier, Squante, from, from Malton Heath, but I don't know that everybody from the Board of the Finance Committee, excuse me, is here yet.
So Diane Brzezowski is on, Kim Baker.
Okay.
Let's see.
Darrell Williams.
Darrell is there, okay, I see Lucinda, so I wasn't sure if it was Lucinda or Darrell.
Okay, and then is Shawna?
I don't see him logged on yet. Betsy Ryder is, I see Betsy.
Okay, Darrell, are you okay if we start, even if we don't see Shawna, or shall we give it a minute, or?
Yeah, no, I, um, let's, let's give, let's give Sean a couple, another minute before we get started, if that, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I think so. And is Lori on as well, Marlene, from?
Lori and Pat, yes, as we know, Pat, Lori is on, yes.
Hi, Lori, nice to meet you. I don't think we've met in person yet, so this is about as in-person as we can do to meet somebody these days, I suppose.
And Lori, Lori's having a little bit of technical difficulty with getting a camera and the microphone. She was texting me earlier, so she, she is on, I'm not sure if she's going to be able to.
You know, we're all going to be experts with the whole computer, working remotely thing, and eventually, then it'll be time to go back to work, right?
Right, whatever that looks like.
Right, exactly. Well, I haven't, Pat, you and I have met, but I haven't met Lori previously, so I was.
Sean is on.
Okay, so, so thank you both for, you know, what you're doing for Hatfield, we appreciate it, we know there's a lot of work. But we, you know, we're getting there, you're getting there.
We're getting there.
Right.
Yeah, good news, huh, Pat?
Yep.
Oh, well, then, look at Darrell's, Darrell's head picked up when he heard that, so.
Very close. We've heard this before.
Yeah, but you haven't heard it from me. You haven't heard it from me.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, all right, so why don't we, Marlene, how do we, or Pat, how do you guys, or Darrell, who wants to sort of kick this off? We're waiting for an update from, from Malton Heath. And so, I don't know, Marlene and Pat, and Lori, do you guys want to sort of be the ones that speak to that at this point and get it rolling?
Sure, I, you know, I can let you know, you know, it was kind of a general topic, so I assumed everyone would want to just understand where, where we are in the process, so.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. So just from an overview for anyone who's not familiar with, with the process. Okay. So just from an overview for anyone who's not familiar with, with the process of how we sort of even got here. The town had hired us to do the outsourced accounting function, what Bay State had been doing for you in the past. The town hired us to do that for fiscal year 20. And the understanding at the time was that fiscal year 19 would be closed and rolled forward into FY 20. And that Bay State would do the balance sheet and Schedule A and the other reporting requirements for FY 19. And have cash and receivable accounts reconciled to at least within where they had been in the past. So that was the understanding. And that process of closing 19 dragged on for quite a bit. And the town, you know, followed our suggestion really to of, of just trying to move forward without Bay State. So we have a separate contract to close 19 and, and do those things. Close 19, roll it. Attempt to reconcile the cash and receivables and do the balance sheet for free cash and the Schedule A. So we started that process, maybe, I don't know if it was two months ago. I feel like it was less than that, but around that time. And so where we are now on for fiscal 19 is the balance sheet and the Schedule, Schedule A have been drafted. Lori, Lori is the one who's working most closely with departments and running the reports and making adjustments and so forth. And I'm, you know, so she and I are just working together to make sure that the balance sheet has everything it needs to. Our plan and, and the thinking right now, given where we are, we're 21st, so it's Tuesday. I would, I think it's safe to say that we'll have the balance sheet submitted by the end of the week. I, you know, I'm hoping within the next day or two, but there's a couple of things that I want to try to resolve. So that the town isn't hurt more than, you know, it, and when I say hurt, when DOR does their free cash calculation, they deduct certain things, including things that might be deficits and, you know, other funds, grants or revolving funds. They deduct for any variances in cash, for example, the general ledger compared to the treasurer. They would, and they'll deduct for any variances in receivables, general ledger compared to the collector. And these, you know, you, you, in prior years, it, there's, there's not a real difference in 19 in, in terms of that. So we're trying to just minimize that and make sure that you're only raising or being, you know, having your free cash hit for only the things that it really should be hit for. So that, I'm, I'm thinking another day or two with our analysis, we'll have that done and submitted. We're not at a point, unfortunately, where I'm comfortable giving out any kind of an estimate of free cash. Part of, part of the challenge has been on the receivable accounts. We, we do have the cash reconciled to within the same variance that has existed for a number of years. That our plan, our plan with any of these variances is to try to keep the variance at least the same for all of fiscal 20. And then when we get to the end of 20, we'll make an adjustment and then move forward. But by the end of FY 20, our plan also includes trying to put in place some processes and forms and working with the treasure collector and assessors departments to make sure that we're all using the same terminology, that we all understand what we need when we say, you know, a warrant or, you know, the receipt or an abatement or just to make sure we're, we all are talking about the same thing.
Betsy Ryder, what is the variance that we've had for the past several years that you're saying we're aiming for?
Well, for the cash, the cash variance has been around 50,000.
Okay.
The receivable variance is, I, I really, it's hard for me to say right now what that variance actually is for a couple of reasons. You know, the town's receivable balances have not really been reconciled between the collector and the general ledger for at, at least several years.
Okay.
The prior auditor, or prior auditor, the current auditor, Tony Roselli, when you look at the audit report, when you look at the audit opinion, he's actually disclaiming an opinion on receivables. Okay, so everybody, you guys are aware of that, which is great. Right, so, you know, he, he's not looking into that. Bay State. I, we didn't see a reconciliation that Bay State had done. We are comparing the general ledger to totals that the collector provided to us of the balances that are due by levy year and tax title and motor vehicle and so forth. So we're, we're, we're just comparing to a number. Our plan, you know, pre-pandemic was to go, actually for Lori and I to go down and sit with Sharon and just go through the process. Sometimes what happens with reports of outstanding receivables particularly is it, it, you can get an incorrect balance depending on which report you're running or how you set the parameters for a report. And part of what I want to do is I, I want to make sure I understand what, what, what the data is that's being pulled into this outstanding report and make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So, but I, it's almost impossible to do that remotely. You know, Sharon is, is just crazy busy, just, you know, trying to keep everything else going there. So, and, you know, we're bugging her constantly for, for things. So, so right now it's more of a raw kind of comparison and we need to do a little bit more work before, before we come out with what we think are the, that, what are going to be the variances that are just going to be part of the free cash submission. Because we, we just don't have a reasonable way to, to try to narrow that down in time to get the free cash submitted. So you have a number that you can at least use. So that's our biggest holdup, I feel like, right now. But we are, we, we will get to a point before the end of the week where we're gonna do the best that we can with it and then we're gonna have to pump. And we, you have to move on. I mean, we're, you know, three months away from the end of FY 20. So because of the time that we spent working on 19, which was absolutely necessary, it's just delayed us a little bit in terms of processing the fiscal year 20 transactions. So.
Pat?
Yes.
Before you go on to 20, can I ask a couple of questions about 19?
Sure.
School choice, I know that was a, an issue. And I was just wondering if, if you were able to reconcile any of those numbers?
My memory on the school choice, we, we spent a fair amount of time working with the school department on school choice and some other of their, of their funds. And what was clear to us is that fiscal year 19 activity agrees between the general, the town's general ledger and the, and the schools. And I think there was a misunderstanding possibly about which number the school should be looking at in terms of what's the town's balance. Because there were some timing adjustments, some accrual entries that were made or included on the school, on the town side. When they were saying, when they were telling the school, this is our balance, it actually included some accrued revenue. Okay, and then that wasn't taken into account really correctly. And I think that's where the discrepancy came from. So I, I think, and I believe the superintendent, and I don't know if Riley's on, on this call, but, and I wish Lori could, could speak to it or maybe you can text me, Lori. But I think we're resolved on the school choice. I think there's still a variance, but the variance is pre-19.
Okay.
Lori, text me if you, it's a little frustrating when she can't chime in.
Yeah, and, and, and part of the reason I ask is, you know, they were, at one point at, at the last meeting, Sharon thought that maybe there was some rollover school choice money from previous years that would be available when we start doing fiscal 21 budgeting. And the superintendent at the time, John at the time, said he didn't think that that was gonna happen. And so I was just, that's part of the reason for the question. So as we think about 21, you know, are we gonna have to find more money or, you know, just how that goes.
John is in attendance with this meeting. Riley is not, but John is. I was aware John would be available.
Yeah, and Lori's texting me. And I believe there were corrections that needed to be made in the general ledger and we did that. And I, I think we're on the same page. But honestly, I can't tell you what that balance is right now. But I, yeah, and I, but we, we, I, I think we are in agreement with the school on, on where we are. And we've corrected the misunderstandings and, and there were adjustments. There were things that were misposted in the general ledger that needed to be corrected.
John Roberts, can you respond to that? Are you on the same page? I, I see that John is with us.
He is.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I think what, what they're saying is correct. It looked like, I think, one of the summer, if I'm not mistaken, it might have been a payroll or something that was posted, an extra payroll or something that should have been posted a different fiscal year. And then I think there was about 140,000 that was attributed, I think, towards Chapter 70 or something like that. But basically, I think we are, I think we were able to reconcile it. It's not a case where there's extra money, but I think it's a case where pretty much what the school thought we should have had, I think, pretty much, we are close to that balance now. That's my, that's my memory of it.
And that's great news because when we last met, it was, it was quite a discrepancy as to, but you know, what, what you were being told, John, versus, you know, until Pat and her team did their thing to bring it up. And it is, it's great news to see that you guys have reconciled, you know, for the most part and, and are close and, and have, have resolved that or, or will give us the final number the next week or so. Because that was a, that was a, that was a huge difference in monies when we all spoke about this back a couple of weeks ago. So thank you. I know how much time not only Pat and Lori put into it, probably others at Melonson Heath, but also John, you and Riley and Christie, whoever else was helping you. So I'm, I'm thinking this one, I think in, in the end, this one was certainly worth all the time and effort everybody.
Yeah, I want to particularly thank, Riley put a lot of time into it.
Yeah.
And Brenda helped out too.
Oh, and, and thank you, Brenda, as well. Right, okay. Betsy, are you all set with the school choice question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, so thank you for that information. So I, Pat, I, you know, we didn't mean to interrupt you. You were on a roll, but, and, but thank, we like that kind of news. So thank you very much.
Right, um, yes.
So, so Pat, can I just re, recap what you said or some of what you said? So you're hoping to have the balance sheet and Schedule A by the end of the week, maybe the beginning of next week? Which means that you, you'll eventually be submitting our, for our free cash number and, and, and will essentially closing the books on 19. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes. And that, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping by, by the end of the week, we'll have all the reports submitted. And then either by the end of the week or absolutely sometime within the following week, we will actually in the system close, you know, within the software, close FY 19. So the balances can roll into FY 20 and then we can start trying to reconcile the balances for FY 20, the receivable and cash balances for FY 20.
At what point does the audit for 2019 take place, with Roselli?
Yeah, that, I've been talking to Tony about that. He had the town scheduled for, I think, the third or fourth week of April, actually. And the, I mean, what the audit needs, auditor needs is the general ledger to be closed, which it would be. And when, when Lori and I are good with FY 19 and we close it, I will send him a report that I know he can, you know, I mean, I am an auditor, so I've been doing it for 30 years. I know what he needs. So I will send him reports that can at least get him started. And he can do prob, he could probably do, you know, 80 or 90% of the audit remotely. But the problem in what, in my mind, and what I talked to Tony about was, you know, it's not as much, I feel like, what he might ask from, from us in terms of reports and things. Because that's easy and we can do it remotely. But a lot of the audit centers and treasurer collector's office. And my sense was, you know, we, we still need the treasurer collector to help work, you know, to continue to work with us to get the FY 20 transactions up to date and, and get everything set for FY 20. So we're, we're tapping into her time on top of just the regular day-to-day on top, you know, for her. And I just felt, in my opinion, having an audit at the same time, it, it would be overwhelming. So that was my, that was my thinking. He's open, I mean, we're coming into the period of time, well, first of all, he's slower the way my firm is slower just because of the pandemic. I mean, you're working remotely. Sometimes people can get you things, sometimes they can't. So he has capacity right now. And of course, he's looking for, you know, for work. So he, you know, he wants to audit. But that will be true for the next month or so. I, I would say that we, you know, again, depending on when things start to get back to normal and, and, you know, you can actually be in Town Hall. I would think, you know, sometime in May. I mean, it's, it's certainly later than you, than you want it to be from a relevance standpoint, I understand. But that, that's what I would be shooting for.
Can I ask a question? It's Diana. I'm curious to know from when you submit all of that information typically in a typical year, how long it takes for DOR to certify free cash? And if you've gotten any information from them about how things could be different because of the pandemic?
Right. Typically, and I, I will say that it depends what time of year you're submitting, when you're, if you're submitting around the same time everybody else is, which is generally in the fall, in the early fall. Then, then it takes them a little bit longer. Right now, they, they also, I think, are a little bit slower. So I would guess within a week. Definitely within two weeks, I would say.
Okay.
And I, I have, I have been talking to DOR because I also didn't realize until, I think, yesterday, when I was talking to Tony, that Hatfield, DOR has required that Hatfield provide the audited financial statements along with the balance sheet for free cash in the past. That, DOR only does that for a very, very, very few number of towns in the Commonwealth. And I understand where, I understand why they were requiring it and, and all that. But, you know, I realized it yesterday. So I'm thinking, well, that audit's not gonna get done, you know, in time to submit. So I reached out to Mary Jane Handy and, and kind of down the line there. So they're, they're willing to waive that requirement. They, they won't require the audit to be done. They, we, you know, we, we have a good relationship with them. They, so they're okay going with the balance sheet, what we, what we put together for a balance sheet. So.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
It'll save Daryl and I another trip to Worcester.
So can I just ask, is Tony from the auditor's office? What, who is Tony?
Tony is, is your, your independent auditor. It's Roselli and Clark.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
And if I could just interrupt for a moment, actually, Tony did reach out to me. He sent me an email today. I haven't had a chance to get back to him. But he, he is looking at, at making arrangements for the audit, doing it remotely as you had suggested, Pat.
Right. I, I just think in, in my mind, I, I would look to Sharon and, and see what her, how, how, how crazy busy she might be. Because he's, he's gonna be asking for a lot from her. So.
Sharon is on the call. Did Sharon, did you want to speak to this or?
Is on, it looks like she's available by, she's on.
Can you hear me?
Phone.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. To, to Pat's point, it's, but it's gotta get done. So we'll do what we need to do to, obviously, we're running short staffed here. Agreena's only in part-time at this point. But as always, whatever we've got to do to try to, you know, facilitate that, we'll do what we can.
I, I understand. In my mind, I think that's the things that we need to finish 19 and to have 20 be current. To my mind, that's a higher priority than. To my mind, that's a higher priority than, than the audit. So that's how I would suggest, you know, as an approach. I mean, that's, I'm speaking as like your town, if I were your, I am your town accountant, that's what I'd be telling you.
Well, I think in the past, we've been so anxious about the audit because we couldn't do free cash without it.
Exactly.
So now, if that's a little bit different because you're vouching for us, then we can shift our focus and finish twenty if we can still get free cash done. But that's my.
Yep. That's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, I understand in the past, you needed it. If, if they're gonna require it, uh, for free cash, then, you know, you've got that imposed timeline. But, um, we don't. So I, I mean, I wouldn't, I'm, I'm not, you know, I would push it out only as far as we needed to. Um, so, which I, I don't, I think would be mad.
Before you go, Daryl, the other thing I, sorry, Daryl, I would mention is that we are, I feel comfortable if you guys do need to come here. You know, you know, we'd have to check with the Board of Health, but you're considered a, an employee of the town.
Right.
So when you guys do feel comfortable, even during all of this, you know, we'd still work at a distance, but at least you could be in the building. So that is an option from my perspective.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, Daryl.
Don't be Sharon.
And we may wanna, we may wanna do that. Um, we'll, let's see how long, um, you know, because we're, we're not quite at that point, you know, wanna figure out nineteen and then, um, and then we'll work with twenty. And I'm, I'm hoping that by the time we're ready to really dig in and reconcile and dig into those FY twenty transactions and talk to you about what reports you're getting and what controls you have internally in your department and all, you know, because I wanna understand all that as well. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be past this and we'll be much more open, so.
What, what will we need to have completed? I mean, if by some chance we have some, some, our annual town meeting in June sometime or late June, I, I, I know that, we'll talk about that later. But can you just review with me what needs to be completed before we have? Can we, can we have that meeting without having the audit done at that time? I know we need free cash and we need nineteen taken care of and stuff like that, but anyway.
That wouldn't, it wouldn't hold up your, um, your town meeting at all. I mean, I, other than having the free, you know, de- depending on how your budget is structured and, and what, um, you're anticipating or hoping to have in free cash and use in free cash, you know, that would be the, that would be the factor. Um, when we submit the balance sheet, we will, at that point, because everything will be as nailed down as we feel we can make it, um, we will have an estimate, um, at, at that point. Um, so we can, even to just give you a ballpark, you know, if it's, you know, less than what you had been anticipating, then we, we would try to give you as much of a heads up on that.
To be honest with you, the last few years, um, we've learned to anticipate nothing because of all the troubles we've had.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, that's, that's a good plan. As a conservative accountant, that's, that, I will like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so. Um, so I think, I think that was, that's it for nineteen, for where we are in nineteen, I think. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any, uh, questions on nineteen. And I can give you a, a brief update on where we are in FY twenty. FY twenty is going.
Thanks, Pat. No, I, I was just gonna say, um, do Diana or Ed have any questions? And then we'll ask if the, um, anybody on the finance committee has any questions just regarding twenty nineteen.
I do not.
Okay. Um, Daryl or Betsy or anybody else from the finance committee or, or Ed? If, if anybody has anything regarding twenty nineteen, please, uh, please let Pat know and then we'll, we'll move on to the twenty twenty discussion.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right.
All set.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Okay, so, um, FY twenty, and this won't, uh, take too long. The, um, vendor warrants, um, have been entered up to date. Uh, and as you know, Diane, you have Diane Laberty, um, entering those and we've been processing the warrants. The payroll warrants, um, you know, part of, part of what we wanna try to accomplish in, um, Hatfield is, you know, you haven't, you have several different kind of systems that are trying to talk to each other. So you've got the school department that's on Tyler software and has its own set of account numbers. And then you have, um, I think the thing with the payroll, Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, you, you're using, um, Tyler for that, right? Right. So, so you're using Tyler for payroll and that has, um, yet another set of account numbers. So you've got the school and you've got Tyler payroll. And then you have the general ledger. So you've got three different sets of account numbers, all that need to talk to each other. So what we, our, you know, absolute intention during FY twenty or by the end of FY twenty is to, to come up with some automated way to get these to talk to each other. I mean, legit, you know, from a technical standpoint, it, it should be a fairly simple crosswalk. But, um, but there, I know there's more to it than that. So we're, we're just trying to figure out, how do we take this data without rekeying it in? You know, and that, and that's where I think a lot of, sometimes the errors come from, particularly between the school and the town. Um, because that information has to be regurgitated basically to get it into the town's general ledger. And that's just, it's just prone to error, you know, it's hu, that's just human. So, um, so we're, as we're, so part of the reason I'm saying all this is the payroll warrants, excuse me, the payroll warrants need to be summarized in, in a way that will let us then post them to the general ledger. So that is in process. So as a result, unfortunately, there are no payroll, the payroll warrants, the payroll warrants have all been processed. They've been approved, people have been paid, but it, um, is not reflected in the general ledger right now, like in the expenses right now, which pretty much makes your budget versus actual, you know, meaningless. Um, so, you know, we recognize this and we're, and we're, we're trying, you know, we're trying to get them done, um, as fast as we can. Um, and I, and we have a process in place now and we have a staff person who's, uh, working on it. So again, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, assuming, um, the staff person can, can get on them right away. I'm hoping with, we're hoping within another, um, couple of weeks that we'll have all the payroll warrants in there. Because once you do the summarization and then you do the entry, that doesn't take any time at all. So, you know, we can do months of payroll warrant posting, uh, quickly, as soon as we get the summary, so.
Is part of the, the general ledger or whatever, that's, is that's Vadar?
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And then, at some point, is it gonna make sense to make all of them one system?
Yeah, well, you know, what.
Or am I asking too much?
No, at what, the really frustrating part is, you know, the town was on Tyler, um, you know? So that was unfortunate. Um, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the Vadar system, but it makes no sense to have two Tyler systems and a Vadar. Um, so.
I thought switching to Vadar was supposed to make us more efficient.
It would have the opposite effect. I mean, you, by, just by virtue of having separate or, uh, different, um, systems, software, um, they, there's gonna, there would have to be a bridge for those to talk to each other. Um, when, when it's the same system, then it typically is automatically integrated. Um, so, you know, I, I, I know, you know, Base State, when, when they do, um, anyone's accounting, uh, they, that was part of their, um, package was that the town would convert, you know, to, to Vadar. And Vadar is, I mean, it's a perfectly good system. It's not like there's anything wrong with the system. It's just, um, the communication between the, the other modules that need, they all need to talk to each other. So we're, we're try, we're, at this point, we're just gonna try to create a bridge between them. Um, and, uh, to answer your, your question, yes, it would make sense for all, all three to be on the same Tyler.
So that's gonna be something that the, the select board and the finance committee, along with Sharon, you know, the collector treasurer's office, all, all of us and, and yourselves included, Pat, to, you know, once it does settles a little bit, like you said, and for next year, we'll, we're gonna have to figure out what makes sense.
Right.
To, 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 you know, once and for all.
Exactly.
We hope, um, to, to, to make everyone's lives ultimately easier and, and more importantly, more efficient and less errors. That, that's the goal of all of this. Because, um, everybody's spending, and, and it's necessary right now, but everybody's spending too much time going back and trying to find things, right? So let's find them, let's fix them, and then let's get a system in there that's all interfaces with one another and be done with this once, be done with this once and for all. That, that would be my recommendation to, to my colleagues and, and the finance committee.
I, I guess I was under the impression when Vadar was presented to us as a possibility that that's the direction we were heading, that it was gonna make things more efficient, so.
This is Sharon, can you hear me?
Yes.
So from the collector's point of view, Vadar has sped up the process.
Right.
If Ty, we have converted all of the collector's side, which we used a DOS-based program before in point to do that. And so, you know, I'm the one who's on the fence all the time about Vadar not. And from the collector's perspective, it's working fabulous. You guys are now upload, getting all of my receipts from the collector's office and not having to book them.
Right.
I'm not defending either one, but we already now have jumped in with Vadar for all of our collecting things for water sewer, real estate, personal property. So Tyler does not give that as an option, just so everyone's clear. So if we go back to Tyler for the school and for the collecting, uh, for the treasurer's point of view, uh, for payroll purposes, there's no option there for what you would do as a collector.
No.
I think Tyler has.
Sharon, I, I'm sorry.
I mean, yes, Munis, right. Tyler, Munis has, I know, it's crazy expensive.
We can't afford that, so.
No, it's crazy expensive.
I looked into that beforehand. So if we make that choice back to go to Tyler and that solution, there's, no, there's a gap there of what we then do for collecting.
Right, and, and, and we, we will collectively take care of this once and for all after we get through, um, straightening out nineteen and twenty. Because, and there's a long history and Daryl and I and, and Marlene, you know, we, we don't need to rehash it here, but we, but we need to do our best to come up with one system. Or if we're gonna have two, they've gotta, there's gotta be a way of interfacing so that the, the nonsense stops once and for all. In this day and age, uh, whatever, so, go ahead. I digress.
I, I, I couldn't agree more. And, and that, our goal, um, is to, by the end of twenty, to, if it, if it's not completely implemented, to at least have a, a, a mechanism, um, that, you know, reduces to the absolute minimum, hopefully none, um, the rekeying or, or re-entering or, or any of that. There's gotta be a way to bridge these systems and that, and that was our, that is the way we're approaching it. We're approaching it like the town is gonna stay with Vadar for GL and collections and, and the others are gonna stay with what they have, Tyler and, uh, for payroll and for school. And I, I mean, I know we can get this to, to work and talk to each other. We just, we just gotta figure it out.
Yeah, I would agree.
But then there's, there's a lot of other processes that also need to happen in there, you know? Um, and it has to do with, in, in my mind, with the communication and, uh, transfer of data between the accountant, the treasurer, the collector and the assessor. If those four, you know, functions, um, can talk to each other and exchange information in a, in a comparative way, um, that's what's needed, you know? And then making sure within the collector's office that, um, your controls make sense and that you're, you're, you are comfortable reconciling within your department. You know, like that you know you have, um, a lot of times collectors will keep a control book, that they call a control book. So, you know, that's where you write the, the total commitment for the, you know, year and the total abatement and all that. And then you reconcile that to the actual detailed balance due. And, you know, there's things like that that I just wanna make sure I understand. So our goal is to get the town to that point. I mean, I can tell you, Lori and I have put in a lot of time and we are both really just, we're gonna do this. We are gonna get to the other side of this and have it be, have it work. And, because I can, uh, we can see it, we can get there. It just, and honestly, I'm thinking two to three years before you're at a point where it's really running like smoothly. And, you know, it just, it just flows, because that's, that's what should happen. Um, so we're not, we're not there yet, but as we're going through this process, we're, we're, you know, we've talked to our IT guy about, okay, how do we, is there some way we can move it, get this data from here to here?
Can I ask a question? My, my question is, my question is, are other towns experiencing the same thing with multiple platforms trying to talk to each other? Or is there, is there a platform in place, a software program that does everything? Or is there not?
Yeah, there is. Um, and, and it, it is not typical to have a community that has several different, uh, platforms, the way you do. Or you have two, I mean, you have Vadar and Tyler, basically. Um, that's, that's unusual, uh, in my experience. Um, you know, Tyler slash Munis, um, is, I mean, I, I like it from an accounting standpoint. I think it does from a general ledger standpoint and all that. Um, it's just the most expensive when you get all modules. So, you know, generally, the larger communities, um, have that. Um, Vadar does, I mean, you have the collections and you have, um, the general ledger, so that, you know, they have that. They're not as good on this, I, I don't think, on the, for the school's purposes, because, you know, the school has a whole other level of reporting requirements that, um, uh, is, is driven actually by their chart of accounts and, um, so forth. So there, there's other, um, elements to that, that, uh, Vadar doesn't, uh, I don't, I don't know that Vadar really accommodates that. Um, but no, it's, it's unusual. Typically, when a town selects a software, everybody, it's a, it's a joint decision and everybody goes with that's one provider.
Thanks, Pat.
Sure. Um, I can, can, I can continue. There's only a couple of other things with FY twenty.
No, 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 yeah, absolutely.
Um, on the receipt side, um, excuse me, on the receipt side, uh, the receipts have actually been entered through only through October. Um, we're, uh, working with, you know, the way, the way the system works, the treasurer is the one receiving the money and, um, they create, uh, postings, batches to be posted. And then they do what they need to do on their end to kind of push it over to the accountant's side so that the accountant then sees it, can verify it and post it. So, um, I, and it's that process that we, we, I don't, I don't know that we understood completely what needed to happen. Um, so, uh, because, you know, Sharon would be saying, I posted, I have, I, I posted all those, I did those batches. Um, and we're looking at our screen and we're saying, but we don't see any. So, you know, it took a little while to sort of figure that out. Um, so that, uh, so we got that, we have that down. But, um, again, it, it's kind of this balancing act between spending time on nineteen versus twenty. So that, um, but I, you know, one, again, once we kind of pass the nineteen, um, off and we're done with it, um, that won't take long, I don't think, to do the receipts. I mean, we have to verify them, but we have, we have hands that can help us do that, so. And then once, um, everything is in FY twenty and up to date, we have all the payroll warrants, all the receipts and whatnot, um, then we'll, we'll start to reconcile, uh, cash and receivables. And we'll, um, be reaching out to, um, the larger departments, certainly the school. Um, highway, I would imagine, um, I don't know if police might have some grants, but, you know, we'd wanna try to verify what's in the general ledger for balances before the end of June so that, you know, we don't get to June and say, you know, what do you mean, we're off two hundred thousand dollars? You know, be easier to find that and, or start looking for it in May, so. Um, so that's our, that's our plan for that. Um, and that's where we are. So FY twenty is not, you know, not, not in great shape, but we have all the data, we have a process. I don't think it's gonna take long once we get nineteen, um, done, not, not too long, so. That's where, that's, that's where we stand.
Thank you very much, Pat, that's great. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Did, uh, any, did Diana or Ed or anybody from the finance committee have any other questions of Pat at this point? Or Sharon?
I don't, thank you, Pat.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, finance committee folks, anybody have a particular question?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. No, so Pat, just, I'm not gonna summarize everything you just said, but the, the quick one is, um, so hopefully by the end of next week, uh, twenty nineteen's gonna be a wrap, is that?
Yes.
Okay. That's awesome.
Yeah, I know, yay.
Yeah.
We'll all be very happy.
Yes, and, and thank you again for everybody's efforts, uh, on the school side of the house and, and with you folks as far as that school choice monies go and figuring out where the discrepancies were and resolving that. So that's, uh, that, that's very good to hear, so thank you very much.
Yes. And thank you to Sharon and Marlene for the work they're doing coordinating all this.
Yeah. Pat, was there anything you had that you needed from us while you have us all collected here?
Um, no, I don't think so. I, I think I'm, we're all set, we're just chugging along.
Okay.
Thanks very much, Pat, really appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
All right, Brian, where do you wanna go from here?
Well, we're gonna talk about the, um, town meeting warrants and articles, or did you have? Do you wanna talk about budgets or kind of?
Good place to start, like, what do we, what, what do you, what is the board of selectmen thinking about town meeting, like, when?
So let's, let's start with, um, if I could, let's start with what we think is gonna be, um, the election. Because we already did this with Lydia, Daryl at our last meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So, so we're looking at keep, at this point in time, we're looking at keeping the, uh, the election. And, you know, for articles, et cetera, um, if, if anything needs to be on the ballot, uh, for, for June Tuesday, June twenty-third. Because we have not, Lydia has not been given, and if Lydia's still on, she can correct me if I'm wrong. We have not been given any sort of guidance that, uh, the election and, and those types of things can be beyond June thirtieth at this point.
That's correct.
Okay, so having said that, and I, I haven't spoken to Joe, the town moderator, um. It, since, since last week, but ideally, I think Joe's thought, and if Joe's still on, I can certainly. Correct me if I'm wrong or add anything to it, I think we were, uh, tentatively looking to probably have town meeting at this point. Uh, who knows what the next few weeks have in store for us with, um, you know, what's going on. Uh, at the week before, which would probably be June sixteen. And I, and I. Pardon? And I think part of, I think what we were looking at, Daryl, is to make a long story short, is we were probably looking at if we had to have. Somewhat of a, uh, smaller, I don't know what the right word to use is, uh, 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 a shorter town meeting. It would be to take up budget articles that really needed to be done by the end of June, because you need them for July first to kick off the next. Budget cycle.
Okay.
So.
Do like Southwick and be in the parking lot and have everybody six feet in, in indifference.
I, I, well, I think that we're, uh, again, I don't mean to speak for the town moderator, but I, I, I think we're, we're at this point. Because it's only the middle of April, we're planning on having the town meeting at some point in June at this point. And it would be to take up the, the heavy hitter articles, for lack of a better term, that need to be done to get us rolling into July first. And then if there's anything else, um, you know, we would maybe schedule another meeting in, uh, town meeting in the fall. Uh, pers- personally, and this is just Brian's opinion, I think it's a little, right now, I think it's a little soon to know exactly when we're gonna do it. But we're planning for the middle of June to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
More, kind of a more to follow thing, but, um, Joe, if you're on and you wanna say anything, feel free. Uh, but I think I pretty much reiterated what, what Joe and I had spoken about last week. And, um, I know an email came out a little earlier, I haven't read the whole thing, that just kind of a, an idea, a suggestion, and yes, uh. Like a, uh, similar to a Southwick type thing, and we're just more to following, you know?
Right, and, and part, part of the, oh, sorry, Joe, was that you?
No, it's okay, I, I am here and, and I have chatted with Brian a little bit about it. Um, Southwick chose to do outside, to get more people to come into the meeting. Um, feeling safer being outside, they did it in the parking lot of the school. Because all of the, the parking spaces are, are pretty much six feet apart, it gave people a little more confidence. They use the, uh, emergency planning and the Board of Health to give some opinions and the Fire Department and Police. Um, it also was to try and get slimmed down the articles. To what is the bare minimum we need to operate in the town, because people are not gonna stand outside all that long into the evening. We, we do have the lights on at the, at the high school as well, that's possible, but you really need enough people there. To, to, to reach a quorum, but you also, you really wanna just get the basics of the town going. And we've always said, you know, let's have special town meetings when there's an emergency, well, this is an emergency. Pick some things out into, say, September if, if need be. Once the article is, once the article is signed, once the, uh, the articles, the warrant is signed off. And set by the date that the board of selectmen want. The law says that the moderator and the town clerk can kick it out a month at a time, once the warrant is certified. Um, so we do have some time, once you get past June thirtieth, though. Then you gotta start looking at the finance committee and approving a one-twelfth budget each month from then on, so that's, that's the extreme.
Well, and, and the reason I was asking is, you know, if, if we're tentatively planning the middle of June. Then that gives us a rough idea when we need to be needing to put budgets together. To kind of plan for it, at least our part.
Okay. Sorry, can I make a suggestion just about that general format? That it seems like it might be a good idea to, um. Put everything on the warrant articles that you might possibly need to do, since they have to be posted in advance. And then immediately before, you could kind of decide whether to, how much to slim down and what to slim down. Because it may turn out that sometime in June, July is actually your best opportunity to get this meeting in. That fall could conceivably be worse. Um, and you'd be unable to do it in September or October.
That plan, that, Sean, that plan gives us the most flexibility, that idea, I like that idea.
Yeah, you can always cut them, you can always table them or whatever, you know, but if we don't have them on there, you can't take them up. And if we find out in June that.
Right.
You know, I, I just, if you follow sort of the pattern of the way some of these other things have taken place historically. Fall has not been particularly good, so.
And Sean, I just wanna add that, um, the, the warrant currently is no different, um, than it, it normally is right now. Unless I'm advised to do something different, but it, you know, it has all the articles, um, to the best of my knowledge on there.
Okay.
And, and if I can, if I can add in there, you know, there's some things that we can do, like, like, uh, in, in the proposals Marlene sent to me. And I know this isn't a locked-in articles, but like the, the first three, the two, three, and four, you can combine those into one vote. For the sake of expediency with people, this time only, uh, because they're just state revenue sharing, state monies that we accept.
Yeah.
But you've got some others, like Sean said, if you put the whole thing together, we can do like we've done before and, uh, last time. And we can take many of those articles in a collective group and say, let's table them for the future. And let's table them for the next special meeting if we can. Because we're not gonna, we can't expect people to sit outside for four hours in the evening on a, on a day. Which we also have to maybe have a rain date, because let's say we have it on a Tuesday and it rains, we might have to do, push it to that Saturday.
Well, that's a question, Joe, have we considered having it on a Saturday?
Well, if you pick a Tuesday and you let people know there's a rain date for a Saturday. You've actually posted two potential days in there in case it rained. Um, if, if this whole thing miraculously lifted and we can have it inside, but I don't know if that'll be possible. So if we just post it to be held at Smith Academy, we could hold it outside or potentially inside. Cause it's posted as at Smith Academy. Um, and then if, if, look, if everything looked beautiful and, and we're inside and we can do the whole town meeting, we'll do that. But if it looks very dicey and people are feeling very skittish, we can hold it outside and have a very slimmed down bunch of articles. That are the very basic to keep our town going.
Again, the most flexibility, that affords us the most flexibility.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe, thank you, Sean. So Daryl, did that answer your question as far as the dates go, or at least give you an idea? And you're right, we, we can start going backwards now to see about, but working on budgets.
I mean, I, I, I guess at some point, we, and we're gonna have to, and, you know. Re-look at budgets, um, are, uh, from everybody, um. We have been planning on meeting with all departments, we were kind of waiting for Melons and Heath to get done now. Um, and so it's gonna be a little bit difficult, are we gonna do it this way? I, I guess we have to do it, do it this way, but we should probably start scheduling meetings in the next. You know, at least in the next couple, next week, next, next two weeks, uh, to start going over everybody's budget. And, and maybe getting an idea of what kind of, what we're gonna need for money to make, make, make everything flow this year. What do you think, Sean?
I, I just think we, I, I think it's difficult, and I think that no matter what we sort of. Perceive the revenue to be.
Right.
That we need to consider the idea that it could turn out to be substantially less.
Yeah.
You know, that we may not actually be able to collect all the revenue.
Um, that's a really good point, yeah, yeah.
That, that's my concern, you know, like, is that you, you get your numbers and we can project and predict it, but then what happens when you don't collect it?
Right.
And, and that just seems like a possibility with so many people being unemployed, I mean. I mean, a lot of people in Happyville are older, obviously, and their income maybe not, doesn't grow as much, but it's also more stable, potentially. But I, I can see that collections could be a problem, like even on XIs and.
Right. Water sewer.
Right.
All that stuff.
I just wrote my check, just, you'll be happy to know.
I was so happy to pay my water bills, it wasn't funny.
But if I can add in there, you know, if I can add in there, the state's not gonna be, I'll say, as generous as they have been. State and federal revenue sharing are gonna be very, very stressed as the year goes on.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And if anybody thinks it's not, their head's in the sand, because, you know, and this is like, when you guys gotta talk to departments. They're gonna have to go as bare bones as possible, and, 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 and I'm sure they know it.
Right.
Yep.
If John Robert is, is still on, can, John, would you be willing to just talk a little bit about? What the effect of not having kids in school has done to your, the current budget that you're working on now? And how that's all working, and I hate to say it, but there's probably some savings in heating buildings and lighting. But I, I don't know.
Okay, that's a lot, that's a lot, Daryl.
Um, sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Only to your comfort level.
Yeah, and, yeah, fiscal year twenty right now, there's a lot of changes going on, but I wanna just say that, um. We are not closed in the sense that we are not working, all of our teachers are still working, we're doing remote, remote learning. Our paraprofessionals are still engaged, and we are engaged every day with students. With that said, there are some savings, we're looking at some of our contracted services, and now that we know the school is gonna be closed. Now is a much better chance for Riley and I to kind of sit down and look at what purchase orders we can void. What contracts we no longer have to really, you know, maintain. Um, and, uh, we are right now waiting to hear back from the bus company. Um, and we are engaging in a memorandum of understanding around mending that contract. Uh, we have been encouraged, strongly encouraged by Department of Education and by the Department of Revenue. To, um, pay a portion of our bus contracts. The concern across the state is that if everybody went ahead and just didn't pay the bus companies. Uh, that some of those companies would actually go out of business. Um, and part of the expense of the bus company is beyond just the gas that they spend. Um, there's other, you know, there's leases on buses and things like that that still have to be maintained, so forth. So there will be some savings in the buses, I'm, I'm certain of that, and we'll have a better understanding hopefully by Thursday's school committee meeting. Where that's gonna be, so there, so the other issue though is that there are some revolving accounts that we rely on. Uh, preschool tuition accounts, which pay towards some salary. Uh, and we, now that we know that school is gonna be closed, we are gonna be, uh, refunding some tuition. Preschool tuition, as well as not receiving some tuition for about three months, as well as lunch revolving accounts as well. Though we did lay off most of our lunch staff, we still are looking at projected deficits in both of those revolving accounts. So it's hard to say if we're gonna have like a lot of savings this year twenty, my guess is we may have a little bit of savings. I'll have a better idea within a week or so.
This is Bethany Ryder. Wouldn't there be savings in the athletic department?
There may be some savings, yes, cause we're not running spring sports, but also, um, we are also gonna be refunding some, um. Some of the, um, user fees as well for the spring sports, so we'll have a better understanding of where we are with that. But, you know, there may be a little bit of savings in that revolving account, yeah, and that, that's a, and that's not a revolving account that I'm, I'm all concerned about running in deficit, no.
Right.
And the transportation costs for special education should also go down.
Well, special ed schools though aren't necessarily all closed.
No.
They don't have to close.
But the transportation is definitely a savings, cause, uh, we, we do not have contracts for, we, we pay as we go for special ed transportation. And, and them, that money is definitely, that's gonna be a savings there, as well as subs, we're saving a lot of money in subs right now, too. So, you know, and what I, what my goal is to do is to try and look at. Trying to save as much school choice money as I can and spend regular money right now. And be able to put the savings in school choice that can be applied towards fiscal year twenty-one. Cause that's an account that would fall over into the next fiscal year and help, uh, with the budgeting, so that's our goal, hopefully we can maybe. I, I don't wanna say numbers right now, cause it's too early, but if we can, yeah, if we can put away some school choice savings for fiscal year twenty. The one thing that I do wanna say, though, is when we estimate our fiscal year, our, our revenue for fiscal year twenty school choice. Um, we factor in getting reimbursed for special education. Our special education reimbursement for fiscal year twenty school choice will be less than we projected. Because we are gonna be reporting, uh, the special ed services under the remote learning plan. Which is gonna be slightly less than what it would be if the kids were in school. Um, so that's gonna be a little bit less reimbursement for special ed school choice, it's kind of complicated, but. It, it's gonna be a little bit less, I'll know more after I submit that later this week. So it, it's, it's, it's a pretty complicated situation, um, we may also get a little bit of savings in some of these grants, too. Cause, um, you know, and then those grants, we, we can look to see, uh, maybe we can use some of that. One concern I have going into fiscal year twenty-one, though, is the fact that, um, we are probably gonna have to spend more money this summer. Than we would traditionally, um, because of the concern about regression. Uh, I'm not sure if, if we're even allowed to be in the schools in July and August, I'm hoping we will. But summer may be a little bit more than what we had originally projected, so fiscal year twenty-one has to be concerned. Um, as Joe was saying, um, I don't know the effects of state aid, chapter seventy. Uh, traditionally, chapter seventy's always been held harmless in situations like this, but this is an unprecedented situation, so. Um, we will see what happens with, uh, with chapter seventy, um, for next year. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things going on right now, as you can imagine. Uh, there is some federal monies coming, federal stimulus money that will be, we look, we, we were told to expect that around July first. Uh, I think it's about two hundred and twenty million dollars going into Massachusetts under this CARE, um, Act. And that money, ninety percent of it will be going to school districts based on the Title I appropriations. So, uh, that'll be a little bit of money that'll be able to be used, and they're pretty, they're being pretty, uh, open in how schools can use it. I think it'll be able to, uh, actually look at perhaps, um, augmenting some of our, uh, services that we need to provide. Perhaps this summer with some of that money and, uh, also be able to use it to, uh, kind of get our schools ready to reopen. So, um, I'm looking for, you know, that's gonna be one frightening that is gonna be coming our way.
John? Yeah, that does, do you think, what's a reasonable time for us to ask? I mean, we probably gotta, we, 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 we need to sit down with you and whoever from the school committee and talk about your twenty-one budget.
Yes.
Is two weeks from now, three weeks from now, give me a reasonable expectation that. You know, I mean, you're, the school budget is such a big part of the. Give me a reasonable expectation that, you know, I mean, you're, the school budget is such a big part of the town budget that we really need to get a handle on your budget so we know what to do with the other budgets. So.
Yeah. And I know you, you have our preliminary figures and it should be a little bit less than when, when we met before, because we had made a few reductions. Uh, I'm going to be, we have a school committee meeting Thursday night. Um, and I'll have a better sense, but I, I would say probably, we could probably look at maybe two weeks, two, three weeks, I would say two weeks at least, uh, but then we'll have a better idea of where we are financially. Uh, one week wouldn't be enough. So at least minimum two weeks, preferably three weeks, or should, we should be in much better shape. Um, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, may, maybe that second week of May, John, in that vicinity, somewhere in there.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. And if you give us a day, we'll, we'll, we'll back into it. We'll do what we need to do, um, you know, to, to get there.
Or, or if you guys finish it sooner, let us know and we'll, you know, we can work that way too. You know, we just see you, because we, we want you to have time to, to go through it with the school committee and, and everybody and your end.
Well, the other thing, uh, what I want to add is, is if we do reach the point where, you know, things are, we get the message that things are, are really dire and so forth, then we're going to need to start getting things ready on our end too. And, um, now whether we're looking at, you know, giving people notices, I hate to say that, but the reality of it is, is that, you know, we may have to do that and we have a timeframe, I believe it's June 15th. Um, is the deadline for us to notify staff. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm, the one thing I'd want to say is I'll be honest with you, there's not a lot of fat in our school budget. Um, but we are going to take a, a first, second, third look as much as possible. The other thing that's out there, I just want to add is, uh, the, um, the state changed the rules for, uh, vocational education. They expanded the, um, deadline for enrollment Smith vote to May 1st. Um, I have those preliminary numbers, uh, which I've given to Marlene and you have those. But, um, you know, I don't anticipate anybody else applying, but just be aware that May 1st is the deadline for, for Smith vote now.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Not exactly the way to ease into retirement, John.
So the rest of the finance committee and, and select board.
You might as well keep working, John. There's nothing to do.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I'm good. I'm good with my plans.
So, um, uh, selectmen and finance committee, should we make, tentatively set a date for two to three weeks from now to start going over budgets?
Yes.
Well, what do we want to do, Darryl? I guess like what do, do, I guess, do we want to try to set like a philosophy first? Or do we want to go over budgets first?
Well, we probably should have a philosophy. I mean, we do assume that revenues in the town are going to be down, or at least collections are going to be down. We as, we, we assume that the state money is probably going to be down.
Yes.
And so, you know, I can't imagine, you know, I don't know what else we can tell people because we don't know how much they're going to be down.
There's no way that any of this will be a surprise to any department heads.
No. You know, but do we, do we, is, is level from last year our starting point or, you know?
Yeah, I think that's the kind of thing we have to think about, like, and, I mean, I, I'd like to hear too, from the school at some point, I'm, I'm very concerned about, given how we run that as a, as a business essentially. Being as, starting a cascade effect in the school system where our cuts, uh, cost us so much in school choice revenue that then we're forced to cut more, that costs us more school choice revenue and so on and so forth. Until we hit bottom.
Yes.
That, that's my, that, I, that's a big concern. I mean, we're essentially running that like a business in a way and.
So what you're saying, Sean, is that we might want to leave the school budget alone because it'll fold on itself in a way that other town departments will not.
Well, I think we want to at least look at what can we get away with without making that happen.
Yes.
I don't want that to happen because we're depending on it for revenue now. It's not just a school anymore.
Yeah, it's like. Right. And if we start, if, if the school has to start cut, cutting staff and whatnot, then it's going to just, you know, yeah, there'll be a cascade effect.
It's also a time where, I mean, I, I, I'd like to know too, like what's, what's our capacity? What's our safe capacity to serve students in the school? Because it might be a time when other schools do cut staff and do cut, have to cut significantly and people are even looking to go somewhere else potentially. So do we have capacity for that in a virtual or a non-virtual environment, I guess? I don't know.
And if, if I can jump in and just make a suggestion back when I, I'm just saying from experience back when I was on finance many years ago, many years ago, uh, we went through a very tough economic time as well. And all we did is put out to department heads and said, look, and, and, and they knew the writing on the wall. They knew what we were facing. And we just said, look, what would your budget look like if it had to be level funded? What if it had to be cut by five? And what if it had to be cut by eight or 10%? Please tell us what we're looking at because we don't want to go that way. But what would you suggest you need to do in that situation? So at least they give you some kind of a menu, as ugly as it looked like, to take a look at as a finance committee, even though you hope to never, ever have to exercise that. Just a suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think we've tried to do that, obviously not quite, we've never had to do it at that scale. But, you know, I think that's the kind of thing we might want to do.
Well, it's easy for you guys to guess what they should cut, but if they tell you in a very emergency situation, what would they do? Now you don't have to make that public. You can just absorb it and see, my God, this is what, what it would look like if we had to. But at least you know and they know what they put together.
Yeah. Well, I, 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 I like all that. And so do we, do we go back to the departments as Joe's suggesting? And request them to submit a level funded, maybe a 2% and a 5% less? You know, reduce budget and turn, turn that in. You think that's enough? Finance committee, do you think that's enough?
I would suggest that you go all the way up to 10%, to be honest with you. I mean.
Okay.
It would be good to have it, you know, and, and it would put people on notices how bad this could get.
Okay.
I, yeah.
I, I think, I think if, if we're going to do that, that we probably should have an alternate conversation as well. Which is, is that in fact a strategy that we would even pursue? Would be to cut everybody 10%? Or would we just decide that there are certain things we're no longer going to do?
Exactly.
Right. But if, yeah.
You know, I, I'm not, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know how long this thing's going to go on or what's going to happen. But there's some things in town that are currently closed.
Right.
And we might just leave it that way.
Are we going to keep funding things that are, if we, if the alternative option is to cut everybody 10%?
Mm-hmm.
You know, like.
Sean, we might just choose wholesale.
Right.
Right.
Can I just pipe in? I mean, it seems to me, you know, we usually try to be pretty fair, um, with decreases and increases and all of that. But I think under these circumstances, I think it needs to be presented that, you know, decisions are going to have to be made that, that might not be as level among departments. Um, you know, it's really going to be a matter of establishing priorities with, you know, whether it be, I mean, obviously schools, public safety, you know, what those services may have to be prioritized in a way they never have been before.
Well, and that's why when you ask people something as deep as as much as 10%, the finance committee gets to see how brutal on any given department that would or could be. And that's when Sean comes in saying, you know, we've got to draw a line in the sand that we can't do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I go back, I, to thinking, I still think we ask for a level two, five, 10%. I don't think that's unreasonable to at least ask for. Give, give departments, give them three weeks and to turn it in. And then let's get together and s- see what it, see what it looks like.
Darryl, can I just do some clarification?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So you're asking for level fiscal year 20, level funded?
Yes.
No, 21.
No.
No, no, you're asking, start with the fiscal year 20 and assume a 0% increase?
Yeah.
Local?
Yeah. Assume it's zero. Two percent.
Two percent?
Five percent and a 10%.
Okay. And if I reach a point where I say that, well, never mind, we'll just, so you want to, you want how much of a figure or you want specific cuts?
Well, I think what we would need, John, is a narrative, at least a narrative like statement, like an impact statement. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Cause like, yeah, you're like, for like a zero would be about a $372,000 cut would be level funded.
Right.
For what we projected. Okay. And all we can answer.
When we get to like a two to the 5% kind of thing, 10%, whatever, it would be helpful to, for someone to say, this would mean basically we'd have to lay off, you know?
You'd have to shut, yeah, I got you. Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll relay that to the school committee tomorrow morning.
Right.
To the chair.
Yeah. Sorry about that, but I, I, I think it's the best way to a- approach it.
Well, yeah, I agree. I think we've got to see it, right? We, 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 we just have to see the numbers and, um, and then, then kind of take it from there when we meet.
And, and this might be, this might be a year, depending on what happens with free cash, that we may elect to use some free cash to run some budget. I know we've stayed away from that, but these are unprecedented times and we'll just see what we need to do.
Yeah. It's really raining.
Yeah.
I was going to mention that.
But yeah, it's pouring out.
Right.
Um, Darryl, I think that, I think, and Brian just mentioned it, but I think it's important to see the numbers. But even if it's a paragraph or whatever, I think it's important, especially for independently elected groups like the school committee or any other independently elected body to express something in the terms of intent. You know, like not just to say, well, this would mean a $50,000 cut, because I can do that math and figure it out.
We, we can do that, but yeah.
Right. What's it mean? What would you do? You know, like, well, how, and, and that doesn't mean, you're not like locked into it and this is the only choice. But like, give me an idea how, how you would process that.
Right.
Yeah. I, like, 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 like John said, a narrative.
Right.
10% would mean we would have, in the police department may mean that we get rid of, we have to get rid of two, two full-time people to, to hit that number or whatever.
Right. I get these all the time at work, impact statements. If we were going to cut, you know, $3 million out of your budget, what would it, what would it do?
Right.
So is, so are we, are we going to ask that Marlene send something out?
Yes.
All the departments and say, we're looking at a zero, two, five and 10. What?
Yes.
And okay.
What's the deadline for, uh, submitting that information? You thought two or three weeks?
Well, I'm looking at my calendar right now. And if we, if they, do you think they can get it to us by the week of the 15th? By the 15th of May and we meet the following week?
Sure.
Sure.
So maybe we could tentatively plan to meet on the 19th?
That time with me.
Yeah. Marlene, I, I would also maybe suggest that we find out from anybody if there's any sort of significant big ticket items that we can't get out of.
Right.
Well, I, I will let you know today that I received, um, I had increased the property and general liability insurance budget anyway, but I received a written notification today, the rate increase for the next fiscal year is 11.1%.
Oh my God.
Yes. So that's, that's, that's workers' comp, uh, property and, and general liability.
Where's that coming from, Marlene? Most workers' comp or the others?
Uh, the big increase is on the workers' comp.
Yeah. So that, that relates to our experience in some way.
Yeah, our, my, uh, experience.
The other things probably don't as much, you know, like, property insurance can be based on a whole ton of things that you don't know about, you know? What is the reinsurance cost and stuff? But workers' comp.
How are we purchasing that? Do we, it's not rebid every year? Are we going through some type of, I mean, we're going, is it, am I, is it, um, Maya?
Yes, it is with Maya.
Can we rebid it?
We can.
We could.
Workers' comp, we're not going to gain anything, but.
Nope.
But, but maybe we need to look at making some cuts on the other, other portion of our insurance. How many, how many vehicles do we have? Do we need to get rid of some vehicles that we're insuring? Is that going to save us some money?
Well, I can get that list. I don't have it readily available.
I think just in general, it might be worth looking at the, you know, the insurance coverage as a whole.
Yeah.
I think those things though, Darryl, are things that we have to like look at in the budget as, as part of the budgets as well.
Right.
You know, like.
I, I agree.
Just as an example, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen, but I'm saying as an example, like, if you have to cut the police department X percent and we have to lay off some people, do we need another, do we need the third cruiser?
Right.
For somebody who doesn't exist, you know, like, or, and I'm sure there's innumerable things like that, you know, like.
Right.
If, if you do one thing, then you might as well do another because you don't need it anymore.
Right.
Right.
Whatever that is.
Yeah. No, I agree. So we're, were we okay with the date of the, of May 19th to meet again?
I'm good with that.
Of course, we're never going anywhere. We're always.
I got a lot of free time, Darryl. We can.
And, 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 and should we, for that meeting, do we just want to meet with us? Or do we want to, do we want to bring in maybe the school, Marlene and her budget and Phil and her budget? Take, those are generally kind of the three biggest budgets that we have. Do we want, want to bring them in for discussion?
I think I'd like to see the budgets and have the conversation with the two boards.
Okay.
Because that way we'll have everything in front of us, Darryl, and you know, um, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, that's why I asked the question.
Well, we can always follow it up with another meeting to, to do that too, to bring in other people and look at more detail.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So, so we, we, let's, let's do that. And how's that going to work, Marlene? Are we going to be able to pick up packets so we can look at?
Yeah.
These budgets or?
Well, you, you did have, uh, copies of budgets from departments, but I have, I've received some updated information from the school, the town clerk, and as I said, the, uh, insurance.
And, but now we'll essentially, we're essentially asking for brand new budgets.
Oh, that, oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes. You're right. Yes. That, that will be, uh, ready. I will expect to have that ready, um, on that Friday.
Right. Okay. All right. And then we, we can pick it up or.
Friday before.
Is there a way it can be, well, I don't know, well, whatever. I was going to say you could email it to us, but I don't want to print all that stuff. So, anyway.
Yeah, we'll find a way.
Could you put it onto like a, a Google Doc or something like that?
I, I prefer hard copies of things myself, particularly budget sheets and things like that.
Okay.
We'll find a way to get it to everybody.
Okay.
Um, I would just ask if, if, um, Brian, I, I get, Darryl, it's certainly the Board of Selectmen and, and Finance Committee's call here, but on, um, there hasn't been any, uh, vote taken to, I don't believe there was anyway, to postpone the annual election.
Oh.
And, and the annual town meeting, um, normally you would be signing the warrant in, in a week or two.
Right.
So I, I, you know, have, I'd like to feel that the, the warrant articles are, are pretty well complete and, and review it in its entirety with the board and the finance committee at the next meeting.
Okay, and I think you're, you're right. I, we did not vote on the town meeting. We had voted, excuse me, the select board had voted on the election, I think, but not
No, no.
No, you didn't vote to do that.
I thought Lydia, I thought we did it with Lydia. That's the last meeting.
No, you, you voted to
We did.
You, you voted to extend it into June, but did not set a specific date.
For the election?
Correct.
I thought we said June twenty-third. I thought we said that while you were standing in Marlene's office. Well, I mean, it's no big deal. We can do it again. I'm just, we talked about it for fifteen minutes. I can't believe we didn't vote on it, but
No, because, because you weren't sure. Diane wanted more information about, um, what was happening when, and so you were able to just say, okay, it's not going to be the nineteenth, it's going to extend into June. The law allowed you to do that, but wanted a way to set the actual date.
Okay, so you wanted June twenty-third, right?
That's, that's what I was
Because didn't we also say we're moving it back to town hall from the back office?
We did vote on that, correct. So we, we moved it back to the town hall. That was a different vote.
Okay.
But, um, we did not actually set the date. We just postponed it, but to a date uncertain.
You, the town election is moved to town hall?
Yeah, we moved it back to town hall.
Could, just throwing it out there, given that you're trying to create space potentially, would it make more sense to do it at the high school gym? You have so much more room.
No, because we can, we're, we're going to be talking about limited hours. Um, because we don't have to have our regular seven AM to eight PM. You have to open it, open up the polls at least by noon and you have to have them open for at least four hours. So we're hoping and the, and the state's been recommending that we try to get as many people to early vote by mail. They're allowing us to early vote by mail for the town election. There isn't any in-person voting for early voting, only by mail. And that mailing can start as soon as your ballots are printed, as soon as you can get your ballots out. I've already got twenty-nine applications for absentee ballots and I'm waiting for a date so that I can get my ballots printed and have the date on them.
So Lydia, Lydia, how would people, once you do have those, how would people get those or, or how do we e- express it to people or educate people how to do that?
Well, uh, there is a, um, notice online I put up today with an early voting application that people can mail into the town clerk. Once I received those and I have my ballots printed, then I send them out, a ballot.
Can we put it out over the phone thing?
They're, they're recommending that you do the, the reverse nine-one-one call. Um, I, um, also they
Code red?
That they suggested that we mail to every registered voter an application. And that's one of the things I had on the agenda for the, um, Finance Committee was that that's going to throw my budget over, um, for this fiscal year twenty, so that I may be deficit spending on the election side to actually mail out applications to every registered voter. It's about twelve hundred dollars to do that. Um, and then on top of that, anybody that sends in an application, you have to mail them out the ballot.
Do we think, can, I mean, just in terms of bang for the buck? What's the turnout in the town election?
Uh, probably around nine hundred.
Out of?
Out of, out of twenty-four hundred.
Um, I'm just mailing and spending twelve hundred dollars to mail an application to everybody, probably only which thirty percent of them are going to get sent back.
Right, and it could, well, I, I'm, I'm guessing that a higher percentage would be sent back because they're getting it handed to them. You know, the application, they're getting it mailed to them. They don't even have to
They don't get the ballot though, right? They just get an application, then they have to fill out the application, they have to send that back in, then they send them the ballot, then they send the ballot back in.
Right.
Be better just to mail them all a ballot.
I can't do that.
Tell them to send it in.
I can't do that.
You can skip the whole first step.
But, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to think of ways to keep my, um, election workers safe as well, because
But it seems like if people choose, my, my concern with this whole process is that if people choose not to do the paper ballot, the mail-in ballot, or they forget or whatever, and they want to vote that day, you've now convinced, condensed the timeframe and you could have a lot more people in a shorter time span.
Right, you're, you're absolutely right.
In a small space.
That's the
You're going to have to put six-foot marks out on the sidewalk so that people stay socially distant and hope, and hope it doesn't rain that day.
Yeah, right.
But no, I was already looking at the, at the town hall and how I could keep that six feet distance and it, it would work. You, you're coming in the side door or coming in the front door, the, the hallway is wide enough to a certain point where you can keep the lines separate and then you've got to stop the people at that point and the next person can't go to register to vote until, you know, another person leaves and you can only have, a- and you can only have so many people in the room at a time. Someone has to wash down the voting booths every time someone uses them, so you have to have an extra person.
Well, yeah, that's
Four hours is just not sufficient for that.
Or that's
Even, even with people doing mail-ins.
Right, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I can do the seven to eight like we normally do, which is what everybody expects. It's just more people.
Well.
Yeah.
But that's Or maybe, maybe there's something between twelve to four and seven to eight. May- maybe there's a different timeframe.
Or that's what John was asking about using the high school, because then even if it rained or it was crappy weather out, uh, you know, people can be somewhat sheltered.
It's, well, it's just, just doing it across the hall, uh, over at the complex was, was a bit of a nightmare.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody said it went smoothly and everything like that, but, um, my election workers are not used to having an off-site precinct. I've always been the person that's the, you know, running the election. Whereas in bigger cities where you've got precincts that are in different people, there's a me at each precinct. They have a head person that does these elections all the time, whereas we don't have that set up. Just running back and forth, back, back and forth to the, the complex, you know, whenever anything happened. It just, it's just not the way we've been set up, so to have
You couldn't stay there?
Huh?
You couldn't stay there?
No, because I didn't come back here to do research about something, you know, if somebody was having, there was a glitch and somebody wasn't on the voter list or whatever, so, yeah, no, I can't. I wasn't able to do both. So, yeah, no.
Yeah, but we've never had such a situation like this, which is, so, uh, you know, we're all trying. Everybody's trying to think of one here, so.
Right.
I think that I, you know, I mean, if, if it's raining and people, I mean, yeah, there's umbrellas, there's raincoats. I mean, it's not ideal, but to have everybody go through the, the process of moving
We don't see lines like that at a, at a, at a town election. We don't have big lines like that. So if we keep it open seven to eight, I'm just going to have, maybe have trouble filling spots, but they're also allowing us to do a skeleton crew, so, you know.
But Lydia, my suggestion, I mean, you suggested like twelve to four.
I'm just saying
We, but I'm saying, rather than seven to eight or twelve to four, maybe you do ten to six or some, you know, a little bit of an expansion.
Actually think, I said it has to be open for at least four hours.
Okay.
The part that I was thinking possibly twelve to seven.
Okay.
So Lydia, when you're, when you're close to this, can we do one of those code red phone calls to at least let people know what they can do to help the whole situation?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I was hoping there was going to be some sort of mailing, like a tax bill or something, or that I could get out information to everybody. But, you know.
And, and I mean, I guess there's this
What it costs for the mailing, just the simple mailing to go out, Lydia?
To, to let everybody know they can get applications?
Yeah.
Or to, if I could do just a postcard to say, hey, you can get an application where you can pick one up or some, because I could put them at the market and different places where they can pick it up, so then your postcard sends, sends a thirty-five cents. And then you can just send it to every household, which is less too.
I, I
Can I make a suggestion? I, I just want to, I just want to make a suggestion. Um, I, I think we should make the motion to move this election to June twenty-third and I'll make that motion officially in a second. But some of this discussion, you know, things are changing really fast and I guess there's also a possibility that some of the restrictions we're living under right now will be changed two months from now. So some of this discussion can hold off
Yes.
until we know a little bit more about what life looks like on June twenty-third, because we don't know and things are happening fast.
Yes.
So I think
The amount of hours or not change the amount of hours, there's lots
Exactly, so the, getting in the weeds on how we're going to actually do this is probably not necessary tonight. But I, I would like to just move to, to do that, so I'll, I need to do this officially, right, Lydia?
Yeah.
This actual, um, I move that pursuant to section one of chapter forty-five of the Acts of twenty-twenty and because of the governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID nineteen, the town election scheduled for May nineteenth, twenty-twenty, be postponed to June twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on moving the date from the nineteenth to the twenty-third of June? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darryl? So I just wanted to give the Finance Committee a heads up that depending on the mailing or whatever, there is a possibility they'll, I'll run into a, I mean, in, in your world, a small deficit, in my world, a pair deficit.
Well, we'll, we'll deal with whatever we, I, pursuant to what Diana said, you know, if, if, you know, in a couple of we, in a few weeks, if we find out that we have to make a mailing and it's going to run your budget over, we'll deal with it then. You know, but I think we understand.
Okay.
Unless anybody else from the Finance Committee has a different opinion.
No.
So Lydia and Joe, while you're on, do you want us to make a vote to, at this point, make it, uh, June sixteenth for the town meeting or do you want us to?
No, I'm, 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 I'm fine with it and if there was some second wave of this whole virus, you know, at least I want you all to be aware that between myself and Lydia, we can keep keeping it down the road by thirty days at a time if, if it was that necessary, but I'm comfortable with that date.
So we're, so June sixteenth, uh, would be the Tuesday, which is the week before the, the general election, so, um, all right, thanks, Joe. So, uh, one of my colleagues would like to make that motion.
Okay, I, I guess I'll move that pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty-nine, section nine, and in light of governor's declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID nineteen, the annual town meeting scheduled for May twelfth, twenty-twenty be postponed to June sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
That's okay. So there's a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the annual town meeting being moved from May twelfth to June sixteenth at this point? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Lydia. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, are you done with us?
Um, Marlene, are we, are we, we're not going over, are we going over any? Yeah, I think we're good with the Finance Committee for tonight.
Yeah, and, and can I just ask the other Finance Committee members if they, they have any questions or concerns that, um, um, right now, or do any of you see a need that, um, we should meet, you know, separately in the next couple of weeks before, um, the nineteenth? Is there any
Do I meet in a couple of weeks?
Yeah. What, what's a date that works for you guys?
Um, pretty much anything in the next couple, hang on, I think, that would be, uh, the week of the fifth, fourth, fifth, sixth?
Sure. How about, how about May fifth?
Ah, Cinco de Mayo.
There we go. Betsy, Kim, Diane, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
All right, and then I'll, I'll, I'll work with Marlene and we'll figure out how we can do this through the computer thing, so.
Darryl, just to clarify, this is just the board, uh, the, um, Finance Committee meeting here?
Yeah, just Finance Committee, but you know, obviously anybody else is welcome.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Yeah, and perhaps, you know, it would be great if
Darryl, can I, Darryl, can I ask a question before you go off?
Yeah, sure, John.
I'm looking at this, what you're asking for, level two, five and ten. Are you also looking at what, in addition to what our original, like our needs-based assessment, a budget is as well, or are we just throwing that out the window?
Uh, I don't think we're throwing anything out the window.
I'm just asking, because, you know, I do want to put, oh, yeah, I also want to be able to present what, 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 you know, what are what are basically what our original, what we need, but as opposed to starting at a level funded. I just want to clarify that that, that's not the new starting place, not level funded and you can still look at an operating budget based on need as well.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I agree. I mean, it, it, John, it goes back to, I think, some of the tough decisions that are going to have to be made in the next couple
I definitely understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is basically a level service as well as looking at level funded and then two, five and ten. Okay, thank you.
Level service would definitely be, be
Yeah, okay. I just want to, because I, I want to be able to clarify what I mean with the school committee.
Yeah, because I, I believe the budget you presented was essentially level service, although it was three hundred and
Well, yeah, 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 exactly, but we, we are looking to make reductions in a level service budget as well. We're not, we're not at the bottom. Yeah, we, but, um, I just want to be able to, to have some direction for this. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thanks, John. So Darryl, um, and Finance Committee member, are you guys all set for tonight? I'm not trying to get rid of you. You certainly can hang around, but I, I don't think we have any more, um, you know, combined, uh, meetings discussion.
All good. Yeah, I'm good. And, and Marlene, if possible, could you be part of that May fifth meeting too?
Yes, I can.
Because that would be a good link and obviously anybody else that wants to be a part, we would certainly welcome you, but, you know, um, it would, it's always, Marlene and Sharon, it's good to have you guys, you know, to, because you, you speak well of what's going on in the finance side of things, so, thank you. All right, so I guess I'll sign off. Uh, thank you and
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Talk with the Finance Committee.
Okay. Actually, I think we've only got one or two more items ourselves, um, from a select board perspective.
Yeah.
Um, was there, there wasn't any, was there anything else, Marlene, on topic five, which was the budget and the annual meeting that you wanted to address tonight?
Uh, no, there isn't.
We do, okay, so we took care of the election, push it, the pushing the election out, pushing town meeting out, so we're good there.
Yes.
Okay, um, under your report, I think we got everything above that, uh, the community compact grant?
Yes, so I, um, submitted an application under the community compact best practices, um, to and, and I was, I was quite surprised how quickly the, uh, process went and, uh, were accepted. So the Division of Local Services is awarding the town with eleven thousand So the Division of Local Services is awarding the town with $11,150. That includes the setup and the annual subscription for one year for a a software program, budget software program, which I would like to see the town continue to use beyond that first year. This is a data-driven software program. And I have have communicated with a a vendor in Massachusetts. A program comes highly recommended. So I am in the process of signing off on the contract documents provided the Board of Selectmen is in agreement. So again, the grant award is 11,150. That includes the setup cost and the annual subscription. The annual subscription is 8,750, $50. The setup is $2,400. So and and I'd like to also add that this this program will be able to provide the town with with long range forecasting as well. So it will we'll build our budget. So we will no longer use the Excel program, or I should say Excel workbooks.
Right. Would would it be? And is it something that, and thank you, by the way, for for applying for and receiving that grant? Is it something that we should also have Alonson Heath be part of? Or are they familiar with this? Or you know what I mean, just?
Absolutely. I I would
Okay.
I believe they they, yeah, there I see no reason why they couldn't be part of it. I'm not, I don't know if they're familiar with that program.
Yeah, the question was more about the whole long range planning. I know they're still doing their thing right now for 19 and 20, but yeah, but but it'll certainly for us and what we do will be advantageous than using that Excel workbook. Yeah. Great.
Absolutely. And and this is designed for municipalities.
Right. Okay. So do you need a vote tonight to?
No, I don't need a vote.
We're getting the first year, but you're 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 kind of laying the groundwork for future years for that.
Yeah, I don't I don't know that we'll have all the data entered into that program for this coming fiscal year. Probably have to be the next fiscal year.
All right.
So do we but we still have to pay for it for the coming fiscal year, and we're not using it?
The money is, we have two years to use the money.
Okay.
So, oh, actually, I'm not sure. Diana, can you ask that question again?
Well, we're we we get the first year is funded by the grant.
Correct, correct.
But we're not going to be using it in the first year because we won't have the data entered into it?
Well, I I believe the first year will be when we're actually using it.
Oh, okay, so.
So I think Diana, I don't mean to speak for Diana, but I think, Marlene, the question is, is year one, isn't now, year one is the first year we use it, right? We we don't we don't want to get the grant for now, and then we're not using it at all, is I think is
That's what I'm saying.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So year one is really the first year of utilizing the workbook or the forecasting.
Diana's looking for clarification is that first, yeah, is the
When is the first year?
Using it versus setting it up and
I mean, if we're talking about these significant budget cuts, I want to make sure we're spending $8,700 on something, we're using it.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, couldn't agree more with that. But I I can get clarification of that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I know. Does that year one start as soon as, you know, you contract with that vendor?
And you start entering your information?
Right.
I mean, that's then that's a whole lost year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think that's very important, and and I will find out.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, unanticipated new business, Marlene, Diana, Ed?
I'd just like to quickly just let the Board of Selectmen know, well, as you know, we've had the Gravity Thickner project going on at the wastewater treatment plant, and that is moving along. The old equipment has been demolished. Majority of the new equipment is installed, and the engineer will be meeting with the wastewater water plant operators tomorrow. They're meeting with an electrician just to coordinate the electrical portion of it. They estimate substantial completion in about three to four weeks. And the total project fully operational by June 1st. I just I know we hadn't had an update. And then I also meant to let the board know last week, and I know you you talk to Phil periodically, but if the public is interested, and people probably have noticed that, you know, we have that water project in progress out on Chestnut. So so between that and and the wastewater treatment plant project, things are moving along on the DPW side.
Is there is there an estimated timeframe that you're aware of on having Chestnut Street open and that project done?
I don't have an estimated date for that, but I will follow up with Phil.
Okay.
Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Ted or Diana, did you have any other unanticipated new business?
I don't.
I don't.
Marlene, did you have anything else that we needed to discuss this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, well, before we adjourn, I'd like to thank everybody, my colleagues, the Finance Committee, most of whom I think have dropped, Superintendent Roberts, and all the guest speakers, as well as the public who have joined as well. So it's it's a it's a little different feel doing it this way, but it's the world we're living in right now. So we appreciate everybody for joining, and we appreciate everybody's patience.
And 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 I have to say, I, you know, we're we're dealing with a lot of variables and a lot of unknowns right now. And, you know, our department heads are going to be asked to, you know, give a lot of information based on facts they don't know. But we'll we'll do the best we can and, you know, get through this. And, you know, we appreciate our department heads very much for the work that they're going to need to do, some of which some of which will hurt.
And Marlene, thank you very much for for everything you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Ed. I'm sorry I kept interrupting you.
I said we will survive, and with that, we'll I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, aye. Thank you very much, everybody, and we're gonna drop we're gonna drop the call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too.